Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the March 7th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kater?
Here.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Commissioner Lomas?
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and general well-being of our community. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone who wishes to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on items 5A through 5G and 6A, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one coming forward, we will now move on to consent calendar non-public hearing items. These agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar non-public hearing item for separate If not, may I have a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the consent calendar non-public hearing items?
I'll make a motion to approve item 4A, consent calendar non-public hearing items.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Lomas, thank you. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
We will now move on to consent calendar public hearing items. The next agenda section includes public hearings that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The planning director will read each of the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of all items to be considered. If you would like to speak on the item, please come forward after the item is read and ask that the item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote on all items together in one motion without further comment. Mr. Coyle, will you please present items 5A through 5G?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. We have seven projects on the consent calendar this evening. Project 5A is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6780, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of 73 lots for the purposes of single-family residential development on 20 acres zoned R1 located on both sides of the future Panorama Drive, a quarter-mile west of Vineland Road. Project 5B is an extension of time for vesting tentative parcel map 11192, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of 14 parcels for commercial and commercial office purposes on 35.62 gross acres located on the northeast corner of Allen Road and Stockdale Highway. Project 5C is vesting tentative parcel map 12322, which is a proposal to subdivide 32.43 acres into three parcels and one drill site for future single-family residential development located south of the intersection of Red Bank and Glebe Roads. Project 5D is a general plan amendment zone change 18-0278, a proposal for a general plan amendment zone change on 21.14 acres located on the east side of South Union Avenue, about 440 feet north of East Berkshire Road and south of and adjacent to the Arvin-Eddison Canal. The request includes, one, a change to the land use designation from low-density residential to high-medium-density residential, and, two, a change in zoning from one-family dwelling to limited multiple-family dwelling. Project 5E is a general plan amendment zone change 18-0359, which is a proposal on 22.98 total gross acres located on the northeast corner of Fairfax Road and College Avenue. The request includes, one, a change to the land use designation from low-density residential to general commercial on 11.97 acres and high-medium-density residential to general commercial on an additional 11.01 gross acres, and, two, a change in zoning from one-family dwelling to a combined-zoned C2 planned commercial development on 11.97 gross acres and a planned unit development to C2 PCD on 11.01 gross acres. Project 5F is a planned development review, 18-0360, for a self-storage facility in a C2 PCD zone located at the northeast corner of Fairfax Road and College Avenue, and this project is related to the project immediately preceding it. And finally, Project 5G is a specific plan amendment, number 18-0452, to reconfigure the shape of a public park in Village A of the West Ming specific plan from a compact rectangular shape to a linear park located along Ming Avenue, the future West Beltway, the Kern River Canal, and Highgate Park Boulevard. This concludes my reading of the projects on the consent calendar public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. At this time, I will open all of the consent calendar public hearing items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a consent calendar public hearing item? Again, this is not the time to take testimony. Only request that it be moved to the public hearing portion of the evening.
If there's somebody here on 5D, if you want to have that pulled, now would be the time to come to the microphone.
Yes, items 5A through 5G, if you wish to speak on that item, yes. Okay, all right. Seeing no one wishing to speak on items 5A through 5G, is there any commissioner who wishes to remove an item for further discussion? Commissioner Coleman?
Yes, I'd like to have items 5C, 5E, and 5G, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Are there any other commissioners wishing to move any of the items not mentioned? Okay.
Just to confirm, that was 5C, 5E, and 5G? Commissioner Coleman?
I imagine 5F would also be pulled as well, then? Since the two were...
We don't have to talk about them at the same time, but it would make sense to pull both of them and open them at once. I agree.
Okay, so we'll pull 5F. Okay. At this time, public hearing on consent calendar items 5A, 5B, and 5D are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on consent calendars 5A, 5B, and 5D?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Bell? This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
It is now time to hear the consent calendar public hearing items removed from that portion of the agenda. In addition, we have a public hearing, item 6A, which when we get to that, I will be stepping out, and my very capable colleague, Commissioner Coleman, will be taking over. But prior to that, we will discuss the items pulled from the consent calendar portion of the agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to explain how each of the hearings will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given a five-minute total time to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. If you'd prefer, written comments may also be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Coyle, would you please provide us the staff report on item 5C?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Project 5C, vesting tentative parcel map 12322. Project is brought before us by McIntosh and Associates representing Fairfax Holdings LP. The project is located south of the intersection of Red Bank Road and Glebe Road in southeast Bakersfield. Project is a request to subdivide approximately 32.43 acres into three parcels and one drill site for future residential development in a one-family dwelling zone located south of the intersection of Red Bank Road and Glebe Road. On October 19, 2006, your commission approved vesting tentative tract map 6892 on the same property to subdivide 32.63 acres into 130 single-family residential lots, one canal lot, and one drill site lot. This proposed parcel map, which overlays tract map 6892's boundary, is to allow the property owner to sell parcels of parcel map 12322 to facilitate the subsequent recordation of a phase of tract map 6892 to develop the single-family residential lots. The existing oil well and its associated equipment have been accommodated, and the operator contacted staff regarding conditions of approval and did not object to the project. Staff recommends approval, including the Public Works Department memo recommending a change to condition 1.1. This concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Roger McIntosh with McIntosh and Associates. I'm representing Fairfax Holdings LP. Again, this, as the planning director, Coyle, indicated, this is a facilitation of a phase of a map that has already been approved some 14 years ago, 6892. Upon subsequent development and purchase of each individual phase, that final map will be recorded, and all the conditions of approval of that map will be met. I'm just here to answer any questions. We're in agreement with the staff report and here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Gordon Nip. I'm the vice-chair of the local Sierra Club chapter. I didn't hear on the planning director's presentation anything about mitigation for cumulative impacts, and I suspect since this was approved, was it 14 years ago, that there has been no mitigation presented whatsoever for the impact on this and many other, thousands of other houses that are coming up, on climate change. And I would, the Sierra Club would be opposed to this project if there is no mitigation for climate change. If we care at all about future generations, we need to be addressing climate change. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Tony Amoranti, and what I just heard the gentleman say made me think, you know, a lot of, because that's out there by Miramonte High, right? Fairfax Junior High. If you've ever tried to go up and down that street, it's crazy because there's, when school is in session, you can't get through there. But anyway, you know, everybody knows oil is a big part of our local economy here, and someday, it's all going to be gone, and then we're going to have to go to the rest of the world and say, gee, we really have been part of the solution and not part of the problem. So maybe you guys could start thinking about, yeah, global warming is a real thing. It's caused by burning carbon-based fossil fuels, and it's time for Bakersfield to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, is there any commissioner questions before we move into rebuttal? For staff, speakers? Typically, we...
This is now the time we've been doing it lately, before rebuttals. That way, if the applicant hears something, he's speaking during his time.
Just remember, no opinion. Do you have a question? All right, Commissioner Coleman?
My questions really have to do with the conditions that were put on this, and they're Item 1 point, condition 1.1 didn't make a lot of sense to me, especially the last line that talks about the SPR tentative subdivision map or other development plan for this property, the full width improvements of the south half of Red Bank Road per the GPA ZCO5-1783 condition will be required. I don't know if there was a typo or if I'm just reading it wrong. This has to leave a lot line adjustment.
That was meant to be the Red Bank Road, of course, in front of the project area there.
So is that written correctly, or am I just misunderstanding it?
Yes, that's what it says.
Okay, it's written correctly, okay. Moving on to item 29, this is the one that had the change on the block wall around the drill site versus the chain link, and we're doing a condition for allowing them to put a chain link fence at this time with some anticipation that in the future that it'll become a block wall. There's a grammar error on the bold print that says, "Should any further development related to the building or grading permits or filing of subsequent final maps occur, the applicant will be required to replace the chain link fence." There's no "to," there should be the word "to" there. And I don't know that it makes a big difference, but we probably ought to have it correct going in. And then, really, the follow-up question to that is, what assurances do we have that anybody's going to check that later on? Does this go in some kind of file that you guys are going to go to when you have subsequent plans that are submitted?
Good evening, Vice Chair. Upon recordation of the subsequent tentative tract map that creates the single-family lots, the block wall will be required at that time, and there are conditions on the tract map that require the block wall around the drill site.
Okay. And do we need to change this wording on this last sentence at this time, or is it sufficient to let it go?
We will make that note and make the correction with the final resolution. Thank you.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Are there any other commissioners wishing to ask questions at this time? Seeing none, since we did have speakers in favor and opposed, we will now open up a time of rebuttal. The rebuttal period provides five-minute total time for those in favor and those against the project. It's basically take as long as you need, but it's going to max out at five minutes. Since we heard those in favor first, then moved to the opposition, I think that we start with those in favor. Is there anyone in favor of the project wishing to provide rebuttal comments? So state your name and please proceed.
Roger McIntosh again. As far as studying this parcel map for climate change, these three parcels, which are large acreage parcels, are only to facilitate the sale of a phase of a prior tentative map. There won't be any houses built on these until the final map gets recorded. So, you know, if this parcel map wasn't approved, we would revert back to the original tract map and go forward with development. So I don't think climate change is an issue here on a three-parcel parcel map. Thank you.
Are there any other wishing to speak in favor during this five-minute rebuttal period? All right, seeing no one, we'll stop the clock for those in favor and proceed with rebuttal comments for those in opposition to the project. If you wish to provide rebuttal comments in opposition to the project, please come forward, state your name, and remember, this is a total five-minute time for all speakers, so please be succinct and respectful of others.
I just suspect that there will be no other opportunity to address the issue of climate change. I know Mr. McIntosh doesn't think that climate change is an issue here. The climate change is an issue, and it must be an issue, and we must be addressing it. So I would urge, if you care at all about our young people, if you care at all about what sort of a planet we're going to leave for them, you should be addressing climate change, not only here but on many other projects. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak during this rebuttal period in opposition?
Thank you, Tony Amoranti. Respectfully, I would just like to add, yeah, it's three parcels here, but it's two parcels over there, and it's another parcel over there, and then another one over there, and pretty soon, it's 400 parcels, and that's a lot of growth and development, and that's how you get sprawl and stinky air, because the air is great today. It was lousy six months ago, and I'll bet it'd be worse next summer than it was last summer. It's time to make a change here, guys. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no other speakers, I will now close the rebuttal period. I will now close the public hearing on this item and return it to the commission for Commissioner Lomas?
All right. I'd like to have staff address. This has been brought up about climate change, and in reference to this project and any other project, where in the planning process is climate change addressed? Particularly this project, how relevant is it?
Commissioner Lomas, I would say that this project is based on the City of Bakersfield's most recently adopted general plan. We are getting ready to update our general plan here shortly, and with this new general plan, we will be addressing the new subjects that are in the SEQA guidelines, things like energy efficiency, wildfires, climate change. So it seems like the general plan would be the next opportunity to address climate change and subsequent projects that are implementing the updated general plan then would be subject to those sorts of considerations.
So if climate change and other, as you said, forest fires and things like that are relevant at this point, how does our old general plan address it? So how are we, how do we cover it, those pieces, as a City of Bakersfield?
Right now, staff is relying on our SEQA guidelines. There is a Section 15183 that talks about projects that are consistent with a community plan, the general plan or zoning. This project here is consistent with our existing general plan. When that general plan was adopted, there were environmental studies done at that time, and so this project would comply with the environmental studies from that period.
So our general plan is how old?
I believe 2002 was the last time it was formally adopted.
And this is 2019, and so we're confident that we're protected by that?
Staff feels we are, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. Are there any other commissioner comments on this item? Seeing no commissioner comments, may I have a motion? Commissioner Coleman, would you care to make a motion? You pulled it off?
Yes, I guess I did. My reason for pulling this off were related to just administrative things that I already talked about. I think this is a good project for this area of town, and I respect Mr. Nip's comments about considering the... And, uh, I respect Mr. Nip's comments about, uh, considering the climate change and, uh, the fact that we're going to be re-looking at our general plan soon. Is probably the time to come and talk about those items. This is submitted under this particular plan, and I think it's a good plan. And so I'm gonna make a motion to approve item, uh, five C, best tentative parcel map one, two, three, two, two.
Are you requesting your comments about grammar to be incorporated?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, can we fix the wording on that? This is on, uh, item number, I put it away. This is on item number twenty-nine. This is the language regarding the, uh, the, uh, chain link fence versus the, uh, block wall. It's a simple grammatical issue. I don't know, do I have to say what it is? Okay, thank you.
All right, is that an adequate motion, Mr. Iger? Okay, um, may I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Wade. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
All right, moving on to items five E and five F. Mr. Coyle, since the two items are related, would you prefer to give your presentation for both items at once?
I would please with your, uh, with your indulgence, and if I could also have a few minutes to advance the slides, please.
Sure, and sure.
Project five E is General Plan Amendment Zone Change Number eighteen dash zero three five nine. Project five F is Plan Development Review eighteen dash zero three six zero. Marino Associates, representing Aldar Mini Storage. Uh, this project is located on twenty-two point nine eight acres at the northeast corner of Fairfax Road and College Avenue. The project would allow for a three hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred twenty-two square foot mini storage facility to be built in three phases. Surrounding land uses include a vacant lot and existing single-family homes to the west and north, single-family residential to the south, and vacant land to the east. There is an existing church on the western parcel of the project site that will be separated by a lot line adjustment if the General Plan Amendment Zone Change is approved. A city-owned sump is also located to the southwest of the project site. The General Plan Amendment is to go from, uh, low-density residential to general commercial on eleven point nine seven acres, and from high to medium residential to general commercial on an additional eleven point oh one acres. The zoning would go from single-family residential to a combined C-two PCD on eleven point nine seven acres, and from a planned unit development to C-two PCD on eleven point oh one acres. Uh, project five F, the Plan Development Review, as required by the PCD zoning, is also being considered on tonight's agenda. Uh, the city provided notice to nearby property owners within a three-hundred-foot buffer of the project per city requirements, and signs per city requirements were placed at the site noticing the public of this Planning Commission hearing. All SEQA and public hearing noticing was done in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. Uh, just some more information on the Plan Development Review. The applicant is requesting a self-storage facility, which would consist of an office, a caretaker's unit with garage, uh, the storage units, and a temporary RV parking area. Uh, the facility will be constructed in three phases, as I mentioned, with the RV parking replaced with storage units during Phase Three. Staff has concluded that the project is consistent with surrounding development, the general plan, and the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends adopting the mitigated negative declaration, approving the General Plan Amendment and Zone Change, and approving Plan Development Review Number eighteen dash zero three six zero as depicted in the project description and subject to the listed mitigation conditions of approval. This concludes my staff report on items five E and five F.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Chairman Kater, member of the Planning Commission, I'm Jim Marino. Uh, Marino Associate, I'm representing Darrell's Mini Storage tonight. And, um, I think that staff did an excellent job with their analysis, and we, of course, support the recommendation to approve. I will make one minor, uh, correction to the staff presentation on the PCD. Uh, and that is that it may, all of the RV may not go away. There is a road that was a remnant of the PCD plan that had the sewer line in it. We think, maybe a sewer line, a water line, we're not sure what's there, but that will have to be kept open. And we'll park RVs on it and, and leave it for the, um, East Noll's Community Service District. The project is two legal parcels and a th- part of a third parcel, which are all owned by the same person, entity. One parcel is owned R-one, has an existing church on about a third of it. The other two parcels is owned PUD, as we've learned. There, uh, and those were originally part of the Shadow Ridge Development Complex on College. The project wraps around the north, the west side of Shadow Ri- Shadow Ridge. Both the developed areas have stalled in development for a very long time. And, uh, this project proposes to, uh, make use of the property and put in the improvements that have not been put in yet, including, including finishing off College Avenue. The single owner of all three parcels tonight is Darrell Ridenhour of Darrell's Mini Storage. And that's the Aldar, it's Aldar A. Ridenhour. So the plan right now of the building is mini storage similar to, uh, the Darrell's facility that have been built from, uh, the Bakerfield metropolitan area all the way north to Sacramento. One thing I've noticed working with Darrell's is that if you want to see what this next project's gonna look like, look at the last one they built. They'll be very similar. Uh, they typically have a water feature, an onsite resident manager, boring earth toned wall, and are all over landscaped. Only the next one will be a little bit better than the last one with some of the elements. Some, uh, facilities have changed out. The, the newer ones will have, uh, steel gray, uh, light and, uh, camera poles instead of the old dark wooden ones. They, uh, will have the same red brick, uh, facility sign, except it'll be smaller, be about thirty-two square feet. And because of the recent drought, the newer facilities will be, uh, artificial turf. The rest of it, the plants will be okay, but the, the grass will be artificial. Another thing that's interesting about Darrell's facility is that they're almost less harmful to the environment than what they replaced. This project tonight, for example, replaced general plan designation that would reasonably allow forty-five single-family homes, hundred and fifty multi-family dwelling units. And Darrell's, uh, facilities, they're only open from seven AM to seven PM. There are no dogs, there are no Saturday night parties. Traffic will be a fraction of what's allowed by the existing general plan and zoning. And the facilities use very little sewer capacity or water compared to what's there today. If, well, if it was developed. And I've been working, uh, with Darrell's for a very long time. They started planning these facilities to go into residential neighborhoods to support the residential neighborhoods, because we all have too many toys these days, and we need to store them somewhere. Developing this site would be challenging, there's a topographical issues to it. And that's probably why this land hasn't developed in several years, including going past several strong, uh, development cycles. There is one of the conditions that I would like to have clarified, and, uh, staff touched on it. The, uh, property that will remain R-one is about four acres of a sixteen-acre parcel. Uh, there have been several attempts to carve that parcel out so that Darrell can sell the church and just focus on the, uh, Mini Storage Facility. And, uh, the most recent attempt was a lot line adjustment. And, uh, it got stalled in December, waiting for the end of this hearing. Uh, there are some conditions that are ambiguous enough, and I would ask this Planning Commission to, uh, kind of exempt that one lot line adjustment so we could complete this, the creation of a parcel for sale of the church. Uh, although we're in basic agreement with the conditions, there is an agreement that's been trying to gel, to sell that, uh, church property. And, uh, right now, we're working on, it'd be Lot Line Adjustment eighteen dash zero three seven six. That Lot Line Adjustment is the only thing that we would like exempted out of the conditions. The other conditions where we have to merge parcels and stuff, those are all okay. They'll be part of the development of the Mini Storage Facility. With me tonight, uh, from Darrell's, I have their CAOO, George Aquino, Michael Nazarov, their Construction Manager, and Karen Kendall, their Development Manager. Also out in the audience somewhere is Wiley Hughes and Jessica Zapata, who, uh, Hughes surveying. I have a bunch of photos, I have a bunch of things that we could talk about. I have illustrations to show you, but to keep the meeting brief, I'll just go ahead and sit down and, and if you have questions, the six of us would love to answer them and, uh, show you illustrations and examples of what they propose to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no, no one else wishing to speak in favor, uh, we will move on to opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to item five E and five F? Uh, if so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no opposition, uh, does any commissioner have a question for the public, the public or city staff on this item? Remember, this is not a time to express opinion on a matter, just to ask questions. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you. My, my question was for staff, and this is that memorandum that we received yesterday. For, which basically was a response to comments from the Department of Transportation. And, uh, what it says is that the following provides a response to comments from the Planning Commission's, for the Planning Commission's consideration. The commenter states that Caltrans has no objection to the proposed project. However, Caltrans recommends a site plan review overlay be imposed as a condition of the rezone. And your staff comments that, uh, that that would be consistent with, uh, the PCD. But I don't see where we actually incorporate that in the conditions, or am I misreading that?
Uh, our, our take on that was that Caltrans was suggesting we do a site plan review in association with the project, which is what the Plan Development Review is accomplishing. So we're doing a site plan review as part of PDR eighteen dash zero three six zero. So we're satisfying that suggestion from Caltrans.
Okay, thank you. Got no further questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. I had a question for, uh, city staff about, um, the northeast overlay. I know that east of Fairfax and I believe it's north of Edison Highway. The city has specific landscape standards. And I believe architectural standards that, but do the, so my first question is, do either of those overlays apply to this project? And if so, have they been implemented?
Uh, I cannot speak to those overlay questions at this point, but I would be happy to get an answer for you.
Okay, I'm looking particularly at landscape. Under the minimum standards, there's an additional requirements that specifies downtown street trees and then northeast landscaping that is a little bit more consistent with a more rugged, you know, granite, zero scaping kind of look. But yeah, if you could find clarity on that while we're discussing. And then my second question was about, um, my second question was more about the building itself. I know that, um, in the, uh, large retail development standards, there's reference to developments in the northeast having a particular architectural character and style. Does that apply to projects of this scale, or is that only large retail projects?
I, I believe that that does apply to large retail projects only, and I don't know that mini storage falls under that category.
Thank you for clarifying that. And if you could clarify the landscape, you know, that'd be great.
We're, we're looking as we speak.
Actually, I actually have a section number two, if you, if that helps.
Okay.
It's seventeen point six one point zero three two. While they're looking, are there any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Lomas had another question, if, are you, while you're looking at the landscape?
And as you, as, to add to your list, your, your honeydew list is, Mr. Marino asked about eighteen oh three seventy-six. And I'd like you to weigh in on that, too.
Do you guys want to take a five-minute recess? That way we have, it's not just silent in here while we're all looking around?
We don't mind just watching you, uh, scroll through paper, it's fine.
I'm, I'm gonna try to find the staff members, my, my issue.
We can take, uh, we can take a five-minute.
Okay.
All right, we're ready to reconvene the meeting. Staff, would you like to, uh, present your findings on?
I would. In terms of the landscaping, yes, this project would be subject to In terms of the landscaping, yes, this project would be subject to the northeast overlay, and the applicant has agreed to comply with those requirements. And then in terms of the lot line adjustment, I'm told that this general plan amendment and zone change will remedy the split zoning on the parcel, but then they're going to have to go ahead with the lot line adjustment now that the split zoning issue has been resolved or will have been resolved. So they can't they can't get out of that condition.
Are there any other commissioner comments? Since we had no speakers in opposition, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return it to commissioner the commission for comments in action. No comments, then may I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation?
Motion to approve. And we're going to, do you need language?
Just to make sure that we're clear, that is E and F?
Right.
And that you want to incorporate the northeast landscape standards as a condition.
What he said.
Yeah, I'll second that, what he said.
All right, Commissioner Lomas and Commissioner Coleman. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item 5G. Mr. Coyle, would you please provide us your staff report? And you may have a minute or two to advance your slide.
Thank you.
Mr. Coyle, are you ready on the present?
I am.
Commissioner Coleman, are we we're good?
Yeah, we're just a discipline of technology.
Aren't we all? Mr. Coyle, please proceed.
Project 5G, which is a specific plan amendment number 18-0452. Project is being brought before us this evening by McIntosh and Associates, representing Castle and Cook, California Incorporated. The project is located in the Seven Oaks Highgate Park Development in southwest Bakersfield, which is Village A of the West Ming specific plan, being master developed by Castle and Cook, California. The applicant is proposing a specific plan amendment to reconfigure the shape of the public park in Village A from a compact six-acre rectangular shape to a linear shape along Ming Avenue, the future West Beltway, Kern River Canal, and Highgate Park Boulevard in southwest Bakersfield. The proposed linear park consists of a public-use green beltway incorporating landscape strips varying from six to eight feet wide with a central meandering trail spanning a length of 2.0 miles plus or minus at completion. As shown in figure two of the staff report, the proposed linear park would provide approximately 13 acres of public park area. The linear park will be constructed in phases as each adjacent subdivision is developed. The city will maintain the public linear park, and the portion of the linear park located along Highgate Park Boulevard will be for public use. However, it will be maintained by the homeowners' association. As development has occurred within the West Ming specific plan area, minor adjustments to various maps have been made. This application is an opportunity to update these illustrations throughout the specific plan. Staff is recommending the updated figures as attached in Exhibit D be formally approved. No public comment has been submitted, and staff recommends approval. This concludes our staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Scott there with Castle and Cook. Our vision for the West Ming specific plan was to incorporate parks and connectivity. And the connectivity was provided by a trail system through the entire West Ming specific plan. When we started looking at the west end of Highgate, we thought we can do something a little bit different and special. So we're kind of looking at this thing as combining connectivity in terms of the park system. And so what we're doing is providing a linear park around the entire perimeter of the west of Highgate Park Boulevard. And, you know, the width of that, you know, 50, 60 feet, have a trail through it, it'll have different amenities. So we thought, you know, we let's go a little bit step further so that if people wanted to ride their bikes, walk, jog, you know, they can get off of the public street system in the sidewalks and, you know, go along the canal, go along the back where you're more into a park setting. And the you're not right on the street. So what you what you have is originally it was supposed to be a, you know, a six-acre park. And now we've more than doubled that with a linear park. And what's really neat about it is, like I said before, the West Ming specific plan is about connectivity. And the way this thing has been designed is we designed this thing so it loops around, and then whoever picks up the south side of the canal, Village B, Village C, can continue that connectivity. And, you know, hopefully someday connect it to that large linear park that's shown on that the specific plan. So I wanted to talk about at least one other thing. In the staff report, and this may be brought up again, you know, I just want to bring out, and this is not in the condition, but it does say that it says continuing, you know, to it talks about a minimum six-acre park requirement. And continuing to offer the typical amenities include bathrooms, tot lots, courts, you know, water elements. I just want to, again, it's not a condition, but maybe that should be reading, which may include because there's a long list of things that Recreation and Parks Department has that they may want to see out there, and we will work closely to make their vision happen. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no other speakers, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no opposition, does any commissioner have a question for the public or city staff on this item? Please remember, this is not a time to express opinions, just ask questions. Commissioner Lomas?
Referring to that the condition that that you asked about for the park, what condition number is that, staff?
Commissioner Lomas, it's not a condition. It was language in the staff report that reflected kind of a running list of possible amenities. I think Mr. Thayer wanted to reassure the public that that's just a may list, not everything that's going to be in the park. That way, if somebody was reading the staff report, they wouldn't expect a public restroom on a linear park because that may not be an option.
So it's just an objection of the language of the staff report, and it's not a condition?
Correct.
So why would that matter?
He just wanted to clarify for the record in case the public was confused about what may go in there. We don't need to change anything.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yeah, I said earlier, I was struggling with the technology here, so I was not able to find a plan before you made this linear park. So I guess I'm a little bit confused at how this linear park around it, it looks like you substituted the landscape buffer we would have anyway and just called it a park. Am I misreading this?
I would say you are misreading it. It is a linear park. I think you have examples of that within the city. Linear park can have a number of things in that. As you use the linear park, you may see a dog park there. You may see a small tot lot. You may see, as you go through the linear park, those park horses, there's exercise equipment, there might be a station there for that. There's there's many things that can go into this park and be an active park in terms of, like I said before, jogging, walking, and, you know, someone wants to take a stroller with their kids and go out biking. It just gets people away from the typical street scene when they're out trying to enjoy the outdoors. So we're really trying to make something special here and continue really the connectivity that we have an opportunity to really make, you know, special.
And how does this work in can how does this work with our newest landscape plan that was adopted here a few months ago? I know this project is exempt from that, but how does it how does it incorporate those items?
I don't know what all those items are, but they're you're going to have, you know, grass in there, you're going to have a meandering trail through there, you're going to have there's going to be lighting, there'll probably be, you know, a number of other things that we will coordinate with Recreation and Parks, their team, to, you know, make sure that, you know, our vision and their vision, you know, kind of get in there to make something, like I said, really special.
Can we hear from the Parks Department?
I'm Diane Hoover. I'm the Director of the Recreation and Parks Department for the City of Bakersfield. And the specific question here is dealing with the landscape standards that were adopted for commercial development, not necessarily for the streetscapes. The streetscapes development and landscapes will be part of the general plan that was talked about earlier in from the planning staff. And those are in the process of being looked at and approved through Public Works and Planning and Recreation and Parks. So if that helps. But just to speak generally of this idea and this new park idea, we have 59 parks in the city of Bakersfield. Many of them, most of them, are rectangle or square parks within neighborhoods. You have to walk there or drive there and load the kids in the car and get there. This particular park will address some of the climate change concerns that was talked about earlier because you won't have to get in the car and drive anywhere. You'll be able to ride your bike, you'll be able to walk around the entire neighborhood. And as Mr. Thayer spoke, that will connect with the bike path eventually as more development occurs around here. We're very excited about this idea. One of the things that when we did a master plan about 12 years ago, one of the major amenities in this city was the bike path that traverses the Kern River Parkway. It's commonly known as a bike path. It is called the Kern River Parkway, and that was the most used amenity in this entire city of Bakersfield. And most of the people in this community, over 95%, had either been on the bike path or knew about the bike path. So to add another amenity that is linear in nature and meet with many of the concerns of the community, they want to get out and walk more, they want to be safe while they're walking, they want to be safe while they're jogging or on their bike, this is a very positive aspect for the city of Bakersfield. And I can answer any specific questions you might have as well.
Are there further reviews of this park plan after this particular commission decision?
Yes, there will be.
And that's by park staff, or whose does that?
And they can help me with that process.
So after this is approved, because this is the specific plan, when Castle and Cook starts to build the park, they will work with park staff on where the amenities go, what the layout's going to look like, down to the specific details. Because that's we're not approving the specific park tonight, just the idea of the linear park.
Okay. And then Castle and Cook's properties are typically gated, and so this all this park area will be outside of the gated community?
This will all be open to the public, yes.
The linear park will be open.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I will say that the gated community will have access gates to the linear park, so it'll be open that way.
And could I also clarify for the commission that we are going from a six-acre rectangular park to approximately a total of 13 acres of land within the linear park? So we're actually more than doubling the amount of park space.
Question I have is access points. So from a public, a non-resident of Highgate accessing this park, are the two access points kind of the northeast corner and the northeast southeast corner? As far because I if I'm reading the map right, there's a proposed freeway to the west, and then to the northeast northwest, there's a what looks to be an on-ramp or interchange?
I can help answer that question. We're showing a small parking lot up at the north end of Highgate Park Boulevard on the west side, and another small parking lot on the south side of Highgate Park Boulevard adjacent near the canal.
Thank you. And is Highgate Park Boulevard intended to be a public access road, or is it?
It's a public road.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other commissioner questions? Or if not, we can I will close the public hearing, and we can move to commissioner comments. Are there any commissioner comments? Well, now that actually I have a comment if now that now that we're in the portion where I can give my opinion. I have a I like the concept. I love the idea of a linear park. I think there's a lot of great examples in our city, trucks and extension, you know, there's the bike path is a great example. I have a little bit of concern as far as how accessible the western half of the park is going to be relative to a gated community to the east and a future freeway to the west. And so I'm just I wonder, since we don't really know what's happening west, I mean, west of this is the Kern Water Bank, is that correct? Or the 2800 recharge? Or the 2800 recharge?
The 2800, yeah.
And so, yeah, I guess I just worry that kind of wedge between a freeway and a wall to a neighborhood, it just seems to be kind of a hard-to-see, hard-to-maintain, hard-to-access space. And I guess, I'm just curious your thoughts on how it interacts with the neighborhood?
The current vision that we're looking at here, and we've spoken with Recreation and Parks on, there would be, it's not going to be a block wall all the way around, so it's just restricted. So there's going to be openings, it'd be like wrought iron fencing, there'll also be gates for the community to go out and use the park as well. So, you know, one of the concerns was to make sure that it's not, like you said, walled-in. So, you know, people can look out and they can see what's going on out there, and also for the community to have access.
Great, and I'm not sure how, the West Bing specific plan, how specific it gets with fencing, but I do appreciate the applicants, you know, the kind of residential streets abutting it, gives that opportunity to kind of give ownership to the residents of this park space. Is there a condition of how open that, because, yeah, I think we're saying the same thing, where I just would hate to see this be a thousand-foot-long block wall with one or two three-foot-wide gates. But is that, does the specific plan cover that level of specificity?
I don't believe so, I think that's one of the items that we've been in consistent discussion with Castle &amp; Cook on, though, because we all share that same vision of not having some walled-in corridor park. Nobody wants to see that get built.
So is there any way that we can, is that language already being developed, or is that at a future date, when the park becomes a little bit more specific?
I don't see why we couldn't add a condition tonight to just say incorporate view fencing or fencing as appropriate to ensure kind of the vision that we've discussed.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to have that added to the condition if possible. Okay. With that, are there any other Commissioner comments or motion?
Since I pull it off the agenda, I'll make the motion. Castle &amp; Cook's always been a leader in residential development here in Bakersfield, you've done beautiful projects in the past, you single-handedly beautify Stockdale Highway with your commercial projects, so we have a good, I personally have a good feeling about the kinds of projects you guys do. So, and I appreciate that we're increasing the amount of open space from six acres to 13 acres, that's pretty cool. So as a result, I would make a motion to approve item 5G. Yes, 5G, specific plan amendment, general plan amendment 18-0452, with the caveats that Mr. Kater requested regarding the walls. And is that, do we need to have specific language, or can we allow legal and the developer to work that out? Okay.
Staff will work it out.
All right, thank you. So that's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Commissioner Coleman and Commissioner Bell. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
We're now moving on to item 6A, and as mentioned, I have a conflict on this item, and we'll be passing the torch to Commissioner Coleman. Thank you.
That's pretty good, because I was packing up my stuff to go. All right, then. So we have item 6A, this was carried over from the public hearing meeting on 2/21/19. Does Staff want to read the?
And before Staff begins, I just want to make sure we make clear for the record that both Commissioner Coleman and Commissioner Wade viewed the video from the last meeting, so that way the public is aware that you heard the comments that were expressed at that meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I personally, I did review testimony on all sides on that project, and I appreciate Mr. Nip's comments, questions, and I had some discussion with Staff regarding those subsequently.
Same.
All right, then. So can we, can we hear it?
Here's the staff report for vesting tentative tract map 7335. This item has been continued from the January 3 and February 21 Planning Commission meetings. The last continuance was required due to a lack of a voting quorum. McIntosh and Associates are representing property owners Julian Carmichael et al. and subdivider Encanto Gardens LLC. The project is to subdivide approximately 40 acres into 117 single-family residential lots, one landscape lot, one sump lot, one drill site lot, and one park site lot in a one-family or single-family dwelling zone. The typical lot size is 60 feet wide by 110 feet deep for a total of 6,600 square feet. The net density is 5.33 dwelling units per net acre, which is consistent with the low-density residential designation of the project site of less than or equal to 7.26 dwelling units per net acre. There is also a request to include a deviation from city standards, double frontage lots, and exceeding the maximum 1,000-foot street block length are acceptable to staff. In addition, reduction of the required 140-foot rear lot depth for lots adjacent to an agricultural zone is supported by Staff, because the Board of Zoning Adjustment approved a zone modification to reduce the building setback. Surrounding areas consist of existing single-family residential homes to the north, south, and east. Vacant land with scattered oil field-related operations are to the north, and agricultural land and vacant land are to the west and south. The Buena Vista Canal is located to the west and north of the project site. Staff determined that the two previously adopted mitigated negative declarations for related projects GPA Zone Change 05-0943 and GPA Zone Change 06-0925 on the subject property are adequate to satisfy the CEQA review. Two memos were previously provided to the Planning Commission responding to requests by the applicant to change two conditions of approval, and the changes have been incorporated in the staff report packet prepared for tonight's meeting. Staff recommends approval with conditions incorporating staff's memos. This concludes our staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, my name is Roger McIntosh, and with McIntosh &amp; Associates, I'm representing the owner in this, this application. Tonight, we are in front of you for an approval of a tract, tenor tract 7335. At the last hearing, the Sierra Club submitted a letter, and I wanted to clarify a few things so that you have all the information you need, there's some misinformation in that letter. The Sierra Club says that there is an existing agreement with the developer of 050943 property, which I assume means the general plan amendment and zone change for 050943. That general plan amendment and zone change was actually for a different tract, 6578. This is not part of that tract. Sierra Club says that they have an agreement on that tract, 6578, which they may have, I'm not aware of the agreement, I think they have an agreement, in which they outline all the agreements for the developer to pay $1,500 per house for cumulative air quality impact fee, $2,000 per acre for agricultural mitigation fee, on and on, et cetera, et cetera. This tract is actually part of general plan amendment and zone change number 060925, which is different. 6578, which is the 050943, is to the north of this tract, 7335. If you look at the area which you have up in front of you, you'll see the houses that are up to the north and to the east that are being developed. Those houses are actually part of 6578. Those are phases 6, 7, and then the vacant area to the west of those houses is part of phases 8 and 9, which we are currently processing and getting ready to record. Those, again, have nothing to do with 050943, and there is no agreement for this tract, 7335. So I wanted to clarify that. Also, I've read the staff responses to the Sierra Club letters. These basically are comments that were made back in 2005, when that general plan amendment was originally processed, the 05, general plan amendment, and have nothing to do with this tract. I concur with the comments and responses to the Sierra Club letter by staff. Since those tracks, or those general plans were approved, there have been many regulations and changes to air quality rules, there's now ISR, there's Title 24, that in the near future will require all houses to have solar. There's many regulations that have come along in the last 14 years since that was originally adopted. So we feel that with all those regulations, and with Staff's comments and rebuttal to Sierra Club letters, we're supportive of this project and ask you for approval. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step forward and identify yourself and proceed. Seeing no one, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this project? Please step forward to the, step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Gordon Nip, I'm the vice chair of the local Sierra Club chapter. I'll let our letters on this project speak for themselves, I do think that our agreement on 050943, whatever the number is, gets just a slight piece of this one, a small piece of it, actually. Anyway, I'll let our letters on this project speak for themselves, but I do want to emphasize a couple of things, pretty much in addition to what I mentioned last time. I didn't think I was going to be able to make it here tonight, so I spoke last time on the issue. First of all, if this were the only project being proposed, its impacts would be small. But thousands of new residences are in the pipeline. Seven projects on the last agenda, what is it, four or five projects on this agenda even? And the city unfortunately seems to refuse to address the cumulative impacts of all this new development. Cumulative impact to, say, air pollution, one out of every six kids has got asthma. If we care at all about the health of our community, we should be addressing the cumulative impact of these projects on air pollution. Cumulative impact of all these projects on farmland loss, how many thousands of total acres have been lost with no mitigation whatsoever for that? The cumulative impact of all these projects on climate change. Pope Francis recently said that climate change has brought our world to, quote, "the limits of suicide." How can we in good conscience do nothing, as in this project? The city does a disservice to our community by refusing to address these cumulative impacts. Second, the two negative declarations that make up this, the project mitigated negative dec are 13 and 14 years old and are way out of date. There is, for example, no consideration whatsoever of climate change, maybe the defining issue for our species. There are a number of climate-related risks that we should be, risks to, say, to health, to livelihoods, to food security, to water supply, to sea level rise, to ocean acidification, species loss and extinction, risks to economic growth, extreme weather, much else. And these are all projected to increase, perhaps catastrophically. We should be addressing climate change, if we care at all about not leaving an overheated planet for the young people and for future generations. Send this back to the planners, have them address climate change and other cumulative impacts. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step forward to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening, my name is Eddie, E-D-D-Y, Lane, L-A-I-N-E. I'm an active member of the Sierra Club. There is a time to pause, and I would encourage the commission to take a pause on this project and reflect a little bit about how this is going, along with the other projects that you're considering, how this is affecting the future of this community. This is a fine community. And just to take one issue, the air quality issues here are so serious for our children and for our grandchildren. So what I would respectfully ask is for a little pause, a little pause on this project to do some reflecting. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the project? Seeing none, does any Commissioner have any questions for the public at this time? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, it's only time to ask questions. Seeing no questions, I guess this was the rebuttal period. Is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step to the podium. Each side will only have five minutes, so make your comments succinctly, without repeating the remarks of previous speakers, to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comments has a chance to do so. Is there anybody that wishes to, that's in favor of the project, that wishes to rebut any of the comments earlier? Seeing none, is there, I guess there's no rebut, if you can rebut, a rebut, so I guess we're ready to move on. Okay, I'll now close the public hearing on this item and return it to the commission for comments and action. Are there any Commissioners that would like to make comments? Does anybody like to make a motion on this, on this podium?
I'll make a motion to approve item, am I right here, 6A?
A motion by Commissioner Bell, may I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
And a second by Commissioner Wade. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call vote, will you please take the roll, or take the vote?
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
So we'll take the opportunity to recall Mr. Kater, and we'll move on. While we're waiting for Mr. Kater to return, oh, there you are, okay. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kater.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda, so we will move on to communications. Mr. Coyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Planning Commission will be meeting again two weeks from this evening on March 21st at 5:30 here in council chambers.
Thank you. Look forward to it. Are there any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Coleman?
Not the last meeting, it was absent the last meeting. The meeting before that, we had a discussion about the fact that the project that was approved at Buena Vista and Stockdale had a previous approved plan, and that we may have missed some deadlines to, to review that project. And we had asked staff to review to see how many more of those projects were out there that were beyond the, and I don't remember the code section, but basically it requires the planning commission, planning staff to bring those that are three years or older to the commission to decide if they want to readdress them. And I don't know if any action had been taken on my request at that meeting.
Yes, sir. We actually mapped 41 planned commercial developments as a standalone zoning district. But of those 41, 39 of them already had some activity on the site. So the two that were left, one was the one that you saw at your meeting a couple of weeks ago, and then there would be one other one that had no development on it. But I don't believe that we have run into that three- or five-year time requirement in the section of the municipal code that you're, you're referencing.
So there's, there's some check and balances to make sure that staff does follow up on that at that time?
Yes, there is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:09. Have a good evening.